Hi.
Roger.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the record in independent cab. And I believe, I believe in Mr. You are going first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jerry, my okayed it.
Yeah.
Hello.
So you're getting ready to use the PowerPoint?
Yes.
So ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you are online, you need to stay online or get back online because the PowerPoint is going to be shown. And if you're not online when it begins in count down to 10, you won't be able to participate here. So 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, with dot.
Look up. We have ignition.
Can we put it on the screen? I don't know what she can put. Do we need to turn around to see it?
Yeah, for the purposes of logistics, may I suggest that you push the table a little bit forward, the two tables, so you can turn around and see.
Well, I was hoping that I could face you and you could watch it over my shoulder.
No, I don't know that she can do that.
Well, no, I can see this one.
The cameras are on.
Yeah. She thought it was going to test me.
I'm going to try.
She's going to give it a college try and erase all those people.
It reminds me of my last jury trial, trying to do something technical.
Just a moment.
It always works well, doesn't it?
Not to me.
And then the judge goes off the bench and says, call me when you guys get yourselves fixed up.
Stand up by the side.
That's true.
Being a judge, must be great being a judge.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Here we go.
Just a moment. I, they want to make it show up over there, so.
If possible, all the screens, that would be.
Now you might be asking. More than legislature has paid for. Why don't we, I know it's not, but we'll proceed.
Okay.
And it all kind of looked Catholic.
Just popped up on the digital billboard on Sahara.
There you go.
I just need the clicker back, Jerry.
I know, we have to, we have to get on.
Yeah, I did, but it's not one of the two. There we go.
There we go. Clicker works?
Clicker works.
Okay. All right, good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Mark Traptan. As you know, I represent Whittlesey and Henderson Taxi, interveners in this matter. As you recall, back in August, when we started this hearing, in my opening statement, I referenced the IRAC method, which in law school, we, us lawyers, learned. The IRAC method stands for Issue, Rule, Application, and Conclusion. The issue in this case was at the beginning and remains to this day, should you as a board grant the certificate of public convenience and necessity to independent cab companies. The rules in this case are, there are three of them. Mr. Carson referenced all three of them. I'm going to talk about the same rules and the evidence that we've heard. These are the three rules that are in play here. The application of those rules will be all the evidence that you've heard, all the evidence that's been submitted. I'm just going to highlight some of the evidence in my closing arguments. And the conclusion is simply the answer to the issue, yes or no, do you grant the certificate of public convenience? The first rule that I'm going to talk about is NAC 706.453. As you can see, at the very beginning of this regulation, it states, "The burden of proof by clear and convincing evidence is upon the applicant to satisfy the authority of his or her suitability to receive a certificate, and the applicant must demonstrate," and there are five elements. But before I get to those five elements, I want to talk very briefly about what is clear and convincing evidence. Lucky for us, the United States Supreme Court has told us exactly what that means. Clear and convincing evidence, in the case of Colorado versus New Mexico, 467 U.S., 310, 1984 case, the court, I'm summarizing the court's reference to clear and convincing evidence because it's kind of lengthy. But essentially, here is what they said. When a party has the burden of proving something by clear and convincing evidence, it means that the party must present evidence that leaves you with a firm belief or conviction that it is highly probable that the factual contentions are true. This is a higher standard of proof than proof by a preponderance of the evidence. We contend, as interveners, and urge this board, that the applicant has not met the clear and convincing standard of proof regarding two of the five elements in NAC 706.453. The two elements are going to be highlighted in yellow. I'm going to click all the way to get all five elements up here. Oh, I'm sorry, it's just the two. Okay, so the two that we are contending are A and D in the actual regulation. The first one is the financial ability of the applicant to provide continuous service. Now, I'm going to be candid here. We don't really, as interveners, know all the facts because a lot of the financial information has been submitted to you, the board, on a confidential basis. But here's what we do know. What we do know is what the evidence revealed in the hearing, in the evidence that was proffered by Mr. Balaban, that of the three performance that have been produced to this board, or business plan, or whatever you want to call them, plans, or financial speculation, or however Mr. Carson wants to characterize it, on the best day or best-case scenario, according to Mr. Balaban, independent cab company is going to lose at a minimum, whether it's the lease model, $50,000 a month. If it's the employee model, it's going to lose $100,000 to $125,000 a month. Now, this regulation, Part A, comes into play because does independent cab company have the financial ability to provide continuous service when they're losing that kind of money on a monthly basis? That's a legitimate question, a legitimate issue, that I'm sure you're going to grapple with. Have they proven by clear and convincing evidence that they can provide, on a financial basis, that they can provide continuous service? We submit to you that that's probably a close call on your part. Subsection D, we submit to you that he has not, they have not satisfied the burden by clear and convincing evidence, that they have sufficient experience, or have employed persons with sufficient experience to properly manage a taxicab company. Let's take a look at the evidence that's been submitted regarding this element D of section 706.453. Neither Mr. Carson or his wife Claudia have ever worked as a cab driver. They've never worked for a cab company. They've never hired anyone that's worked for a cab company. They didn't produce anybody before you that's worked for a cab company. You have no resumes of anybody that they may hire to work for the cab company. The only reference we now have of anybody that may work for a cab company, their cab company, are the two individuals without names submitted on one of the performance. When I asked questions about these two individuals, I understood he was going to give me the names, but I asked, do they have experience managing a taxicab company? Why was I asking that? Because of this regulation. His answer was, I don't know. So the application and the evidence as it stands before you, the applicant doesn't know if the people that they want to work for them have any experience with a taxicab company. Well, that certainly doesn't clear the clear and convincing evidence burden of proof. So what does Mr. Carson say when we've asked him about these types of things? Well, I can handle it. I can do it. I have experience. I am a lawyer that's represented taxicab companies for 20 years. I have no criticism of Mr. Carson as a lawyer. In fact, I think he's a good lawyer. I've had cases against him through the years. We've worked on the same side of cases. He's an excellent lawyer. He's proven that here throughout this hearing. He's a passionate lawyer. But your analysis is not of Mr. Carson lawyer. Your analysis is of Mr. Carson, the hopeful taxicab certificate holder. And I submit to you that he hasn't given you enough proof to satisfy this burden of proof in 706.453. In sum, regarding this 453, he failed to produce clear and convincing evidence that can provide continuous service while losing possibly upwards of $100,000 a month, and have failed to produce clear and convincing evidence that the applicant has sufficient experience, or has employed people with sufficient experience to properly manage taxicab company. The next rule is obviously the big one, NRS 706.8827. I want to just focus on this sentence for a second because I have it capitalized, each and every one of the requirements below must be satisfied. I'm just going to click through all of them, and then we're going to take each one in turn. The applicant has to prove he's fit, willing, and able. That the proposed operation will be consistent with the legislative policies in 706.151. The granting of the certificate will not unreasonably and adversely affect the other carriers. The holders of the existing certificates will not meet the needs. And finally, the proposed service will benefit the public and the taxicab business in the territory to be served. So we're going to take each one of them, one by one. This is obviously one of the big components in 8827. Is the applicant fit, willing, and able to perform the services of the taxicab carrier? We're going to spend a few minutes talking about fitness, and then we're going to talk a little bit about ability. Of course, he's willing. He's here. He's been through this for three years. We're not contesting his willingness to participate as a taxicab carrier. The real question is fitness. Mr. Carson, let's look at the evidence, okay, that you've heard from the testimony and the documentary evidence. Mr. Carson has admitted that he had to be educated by the intervenors, what was necessary to complete a performance. 90% plus of the information, the changes that he made, performance of the amended performance, was gained from the interveners. Even after being educated, he still hasn't completed a realistic and profitable performance. He did not perform a cash flow analysis. He offered no market backup for anything that he has submitted as what he's asking to do. No documentation or commitments from any financing sources. No documentation on how he's going to purchase vehicles for the price that he says he's going to purchase them. You've all heard testimony, how difficult it is to purchase vehicles. He's offered no evidence, nothing about that. During the first portion of this hearing back in August, Mr. Winner questioned Mr. Carson about how he's going to pay people $10 an hour to come work for his company for only four hours a day. Mr. Winner's question specifically was, how are you going to get somebody to come work, drive their car to work for $10 an hour for four hours of work? Mr. Carson responded, people are desperate. I don't know. Mr. Winner said, you're going to hire desperate people? Mr. Carson said, I don't care who I hire. This is testimony from the applicant on Tuesday, August 16th, on page 12 of Transcript B on that day. Regarding the $4,000 that he proposes that he's going to pay to rent a facility, he was questioned about that. What are you going to get for $4,000? Mr. Carson's response, I don't know the answer to that. That's from the same day, on page 14 of that transcript. Regarding what the current market rate is for hiring mechanics, Mr. Gibson asked Mr. Carson if he knew what the rate is. Mr. Carson said, no, he doesn't have any idea. That's from the same day, on page 18 of that transcript. You've heard Mr. Carson repeatedly reference his affiliation or ownership with Las Vegas Limousine. He is not involved in the day-to-day operations of Las Vegas Limousine. In fact, he doesn't even know how the drivers for Las Vegas Limousine are paid. I asked him questions about that during my examination, my cross-examination. I said, how are they paid? He tried to explain to me, but when I pressed him for the details between minimum wage, commission, he said, I'm not exactly sure. I apologize. The applicant literally has produced no evidence where independent cab is going to be located. Nobody knows. He seems to act as he's just going to figure things out as he goes along, if he gets the certificate. That he'll deal with things as they come along. He's literally winging it. He has no plan. He has no structure. We've all pressed him for details, and we just haven't gotten them. This is a recipe for disaster. This applicant is not fit to become a certificate holder because after being educated by the interveners, after three tries, the applicant still can't come up with a plausible business plan. He testified he doesn't care who he hires. He has no plan for a business location. He has no clue what a business location will cost. The applicant is not fit to become a holder of a certificate of public convenience and Is he able to become, to perform the services of a taxicab motor carrier? My clients contend it's highly doubtful that an applicant will be able to operate this company while losing $50,000 to $100,000 a month. The evidence is overwhelming he will be operating this company at a substantial loss every month. It's highly doubtful the applicant possesses the bandwidth to go and unlock the doors every day and manage the day-to-day operations. When I questioned him at this hearing about his law practice, and during his deposition, by the way, about his current, his law practice, it's a full-time business for him. He runs it. He manages the cases. He has 50 active cases that are going to become litigation cases. He has 50 clients that he represents in front of the NTA, tow truck drivers, what have you. And I just assumed that he would discontinue his law practice because he wants to spend full time doing this. And he said, no, why would I do that? That would be ridiculous. Do you really believe that he's going to be able to do all of this? The evidence is not there. He has literally not submitted one person to this board that has any experience either working at a taxicab company, I don't care if it's a manager. He could have hired a taxicab driver to come before you and say, hey, I have some really good ideas. He didn't do that. Not one person that has any taxicab experience. From, I mean, you've heard testimony from all of our clients, they work from the ground level up. Why not find somebody like that to come in, pay him $10 an hour? He didn't do it. With the evidence submitted to this board, as the record stands by this applicant, the applicant will not be able to perform the services of a taxicab motor carrier. The next element, the proposed operation will be consistent with the legislative policies set forth in 706.151. This is what the first line says. It's hereby declared to be the purpose and policy of the legislature in enacting this chapter. I'm just going to highlight a small portion of the language. There it is. I'm focusing on to promote safe and adequate service and foster sound economic conditions in motor transportation. I think this board gets the message that it will not be sound economic conditions if this applicant, six months down the road, has to close up shop because he's losing $50,000 to $100,000 a month. I think this board got the message from Mr. Balaban, if you're bleeding cash every month, what are you going to do? You're going to start making cuts. If you start making cuts, what's going to happen? Customer service is going to suffer. The drivers are going to start doing things they're not supposed to be doing. Some safety corners are going to get cut. That is not good to promote safe transportation. Again, these are elements he has to prove, and the proof is actually the opposite. The next element, the granting of the certificate will not unreasonably and adversely affect other carriers. The applicant literally proposes nothing new to this industry. Independent cab just wants to come in and grab a piece of the pie. The application, if granted, will adversely affect the other carriers. This is especially true if independent cab company starts to cut corners. I think you've heard from several different people that if a customer has bad service with one taxicab company, they're going to plaster the entire industry as a bad industry. Taxicabs in Las Vegas are terrible. If independent cab company goes into survival mode and start cutting corners, we're all going to feel the negative impacts from that. That's going to be the adverse impact to the other carriers. The next element, the holders of the existing certificates will not meet the needs of the territory. Each company has testified through their respective witnesses that they are more than willing to meet the needs. The companies have long been meeting the needs and will continue to do so. You heard testimony from Ms. Gibbons. She pulled the statistics of the number of complaints made. I mean, that is hard evidence. People file complaints with the taxicab authority. We have no control over that, and the percentages are so, so low of the complaints. In other words, people are generally satisfied. Now, are there going to be situations where people are not thrilled, or they have to wait a little longer when an event comes out? Yes, that happens, okay? But overall, the industry does a phenomenal job of satisfying the needs of the riding public. They are, the industry is continually trying to improve the service that they're providing, whether it's installing video cameras, I can remember back when that was a big discussion. Also, the Cabot program. There are buttons now throughout Las Vegas, the Valley, restaurants, bars, hospitals, medical offices, where you can push the button and get a cab to your location quickly. That was an effort to improve the service, to meet the needs of the traveling public. The evidence is there. Mr. Carson, to argue about this point, proffered some photographs of people standing in line at a taxicab stand. We proffered the opposite evidence. Of course, there is going to be situations where there are tons of cabs and no people, and there are going to be situations where there are people and no cabs, for hopefully a couple of minutes, and it's not going to be very long. But the instances where there are tons of people and no cabs are far and few between. It's not a regular part of day-to-day life in the taxicab industry in Las Vegas. It's just not. Much of Mr. Carson's opening focused on what's coming to Las Vegas, what's coming in 2023, and we're going to need more transportation. The existing certificates, certificate holders are willing to meet those needs. They want to meet those needs. There's been no evidence that they won't meet those needs. Each of the companies have proffered testimony that they are willing, that they are working diligently to purchase more vehicles. You've heard that testimony. We're doing the best we can to get the vehicles. We're recruiting drivers from outside of the industry to bring in new people, and we're having some success at that. That's evidence that we're looking forward to satisfy the needs of the public going forward. And if there are more medallions needed, then we will come before the board and ask for another allocation so that everybody gets an equal allocation. The existing certificate holders will meet the needs. Final element, and I'm wrapping up, the proposed service will benefit the public and the taxicab business in the territory to be served. With the evidence before you, I don't see how you cannot conclude that what he's proposed in the business plan is a financial loser. This would be a disaster for the public, the taxicab industry as a whole. If this certificate is approved, an independent company fails, as it's very likely to do, it'll be terrible for this industry. The territory is currently already being served adequately. The proposed service will add nothing to benefit the public and the taxicab business in general. The applicant is offering nothing unique, nothing different. How will this benefit the taxicab industry or the riding public? It won't. In closing, in addition to my comments a little bit earlier regarding NAC 706.453, NRS 706.8827, which we've just gone through, requires the applicant to prove each and every one of the five elements I've just discussed, the applicant can't prove one of them. As such, the application should be denied. Thank you for your time.
I think it's me. Bob Winner. If I say something you think is unkind, I apologize, and also to the applicants. Charge it to my head, not my heart.
Long as it's not a get about Mr. Soderbergh.
Better to cross it out.
I'm going to take that out of my clothes. I take no pleasure in being here, but I have a job to do, and George is paying me to do it. 8827 was written a long time ago. When I first came around in these rooms, the industry was very different. The reason why you see the words territory in so many of them is because most cabs were limited in territory in Park County. But this is the law, and this is what you apply, and that's your duty. I think the strongest evidence that's been put forth by the applicant is that both Brent and Claudia are good people, and they are. I know them well. Well, I know Brent very well. I do want to go through some history and things that we know about this. I do want to go through some history and things that we know about this. And I don't want to repeat the same things. I might cite to a couple of things to remind you about the review. What we know, as George has testified and Brent Carson has admitted, is before this was filed, Brent sought out George and told him, hey, I'm thinking of doing this. Now, he doesn't remember what the advice was. He remembered doing that, but he doesn't remember what was said. George does. He said, oh, please don't do this. You have no idea. I mean, the things we have to go through now, put your money somewhere else. A small cab company like 35, it won't pencil out. I know this. Mr. Carson sought out the wisdom of Mr. Balaban, which I think is a good idea. Had I, and I've had experience, legal experience in these rooms, had I had that notion I was certain it sought about. But let me rephrase, not I, but any reasonable person would seek out George Balaban or somebody's advice about this application to see if it makes sense. I mean, the kinds of thing George has testified to, I'm sure never even occurred to the applicant. Didn't occur to me until he said it. Oh, wow, you know, right? Okay, I'm with you. 3% here, got to do this. Rather than heed that advice or he forgot it, the history in this case shows that what he did was file for it and hoping, I believe, that he's a good guy and everybody knows him. And come on, guys, it's only 1%. And those are all three fine points. After filing the application, which had exhibits in there and a pro forma, and every pro forma that was done is detailed, it's got lists of income and expenses, and at the bottom, there's a profit. Everyone. Did Mr. Carson ask George Balaban to review that before filing? No. Would a reasonable person do that? Would a reasonable person ask for some advice from someone of his experience or any experience? What do you think? Does this look, am I missing something? Instead, I believe Brent Carson, the attorney who knows the law here, he filed the application and set forth to try to get the intervenors thrown out. So there wouldn't be testimony, wouldn't be questions. There'd be before you this application with a pro forma that on its face looks good. This board reversed the initial decision and allowed us in here, and we appreciate that. And I think in the end, applicants are going to appreciate that. The red herring, as Mr. Carson calls it, is the performance. Now, I read through them and I gloss over. My eyes are going to fall asleep. But George can read this stuff and he can say, this is missing. You know, he just doesn't understand this. I mean, on the revenue lease model, we had 850, the second lease model, $850 per week. Okay, we're increasing revenue. That's good. That's under what George is charging, maybe a boutique. Okay. I'm also going to do double shifts, so they're going to share it. And that on the paper looks good. I'm generating another $400,000. That's good. But when you ask questions about it, just the common sense things about how you run a business, cab business, how is that going to work out? The guy who says, give me that cab for a week for $850, and he gets it for the whole week. But the other guy's got to pay another $850, and he only gets half the time. That's never going to happen. Well, are the shared leases over at Virgin Valley? Yeah. Well, you got to get that price down, and they got to share it, but it's more like half. So you're really not gaining anything. And George points out, you take away the $400,000, it's on this extra shared lease, the thing's way upside down. You're losing 50 grand a month. On the employee model, $10 an hour for a cab, it's almost as if these pro formas were written, as he said backwards, I thought. Originally, Mr. Carson said to you, I wrote down what my revenue would be, and then I worked from there. And when he put all the numbers in, there was a profit. But when you look at them and question these assumptions, it falls apart. 1938 revenue per trip, this is the employee model. That's good. But you can't keep the excise tax in there and the airport fee as your own revenue. That passes through. So now you're $26,000 less of them. Has a bunch of shifts in there at 50 shifts, George says to you, and maybe you don't believe him. He says, I'm getting 40 shifts out and I'm running Virgin Valley about as tight as I can. So he's going to outperform me without a base of leasers ready to go. Even if you drop him that much, that's another $308,000. Another $125,000 a month. The assumptions, and I grant to applicant that these are assumptions, but the reason why you're supposed to look at fitness and sound economic conditions and you require a pro forma is to see if it makes sense. Is this a good idea? And after some scrutiny, all of the pro formas end up losing hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think the best pro forma with some of the least criticism, he was losing an additional $50,000 a month. It's not sustainable. Now, in asking questions, we know he met with George. The first fellow was Friedman, who was supposedly going to run things, and he has some transportation experience. Did you talk to the Friedman guy and help go through the pro forma? At least he's got some transportation experience. No. The, I think it was the last pro forma, there's two quote highly qualified people at the ready, but the name. Did you ask either of them to help you with your pro forma to look through this? Does it make sense? No. Mr. Carson's phraseology, a good leader gets good people around him. But a good leader knows what questions ask, doesn't he? I think the evidence here demonstrates that this is an unsound and unworkable plan. It's not highly probable, but the facts are true as required by 453. Sound economic conditions, I think, are one of the reasons why you require a pro forma, but it's one that has to stand up. And I don't know if any of you could have pointed out this. I couldn't have. We know that Mr. Carson couldn't because he didn't know. He didn't ask anybody. The evidence demonstrates, I suggest to you humbly, that Mr. Carson is interested in obtaining a certificate. He is not interested in running a cab business. Thank you.
Thank you. And Keith Gibson on behalf of Nevada Yellow Cab, Nevada Trucker Cab, and Nevada Star Cab. I join in the sentiments of Mr. Crafton and Mr. Winner and I incorporate those without restating all of those, but I'm going to focus on a couple of points primarily. Getting to 8827. If one leg of those five elements is not met, the application fails. So Brent Carson, they have to prove that they meet all five requirements. And there's two specific ones where they, where they fall short. The first one, you've already heard about from Mr. Crafton, but I will highlight some extra testimony about that. And it's the applicant is fit, willing, and able to perform the services of a taxi cab motor company. Getting to the fitness. When we've talked about the pro forma and we've talked about some things, and going back to August, I had asked him about the airport and whether he contacted the airport to figure out what he used to do to operate at the airport and to see if they have any additional insurance requirements. And his answer is no. He didn't, he never contacted the airport. Now, how, why is the airport important? Because that's where the bulk of our rides come from. Period. I mean, between the airport and the strip. And how do you know this? The TA's own statistics show it. Because if you look at what happened in 2020, when the state shut down, we went from having rides of 14.9 million in 2019 down to 5.2 million, which is by far, you know, that's 80% reduction from the peak of roughly 2014. In 2014, the industry did 27.6 million rides. That's what this industry is capable of doing. With this number of medallions, with this number of operators, the industry can do 27.6 million rides if the demand is there. Unfortunately, we all know the struggles that all of the taxi cab companies have had with Uber and Lyft. And there are people now who, because of their addiction to their phone and their addiction to everything has to be here, has to be, they go on, it's Uber and Lyft. They don't even think about, oh, there are taxi cabs at the, you know, downstairs at the hotel. Now, why that is and why they think that way is because that's the way it is in every other, in every other city. Most other cities don't have a line of taxis right outside every hotel downtown. They have a few, maybe one or two. They don't have a line of 6, 10, 15 sitting there waiting to grab people coming in and out of a show or in and out of dinner or convention or whatever. But that's what makes Vegas unique, which is why Vegas has been able to do, you know, ranging from 22 to 27 million trips going back all the way from 2003 to, yeah, 2015, when Uber and Lyft really began to operate. And then what happened when Uber and Lyft began to operate? The first year we were on, it wasn't that bad. The first year, there was a small drop, less than half a percent. Not a bad drop between 2014, 2015, when Uber was first approved. But as we've learned and history has shown, the next year, 16 point from 2015, you know, 2015 or 2014, excuse me, to 2016, there was a 16% reduction from 2014 to 2017, a 27% reduction. If you go all the way down to 2020, which is by far the worst year in the taxi cab industry, we are talking an 80% reduction in the number of rides. Last year was a banner year compared to 2020. You know, we, you know, we, we did 11,000 rides. We doubled the number of rides in 2020. Granted, in 2020, we pretty much hit rock bottom. You know, at that point, you know, there was no gaming for better part of six months, seven months. Nobody was coming to Vegas. And we were struggling. Every company, you heard Mr. Awad testify, we're still recovering. You know, or should say during his opening, closing statement, that's what we're coming back from. You know, we're trying to do the best we can to meet the needs of the industry, which leads to the second problem, where I think the application fails. The holders of existing certificates will not meet the needs of the territory for which the certificate is being sought. All the testimony from Cheryl, from George, as well as Mike Valen, they talked about all the steps that they're trying to do to meet the needs of the territory. And stated in the reverse, for you to grant the application, you have to find that the existing CPC in holders are not meeting the needs. So all the work that they're trying to do across the board and all the hours they put in trying to hire drivers, pull them away from Uber and Lyft, bring new people into the industry. Those are all steps being taken to meet the needs of the industry. And just, and what is the sole evidence to the contrary is some photographs at the World of Concrete Convention Center in February of 2021, which is right after, in the midst of the pandemic. And there were some, and there were some taxi lines, people on the taxi lines. That's the only evidence there is on behalf of Mr. Carson, that the needs aren't being met. And in Handicap versus Nevada Transportation Authority, then the Nevada Supreme Court says have not does not mean will not, and the standard is will not. And so you, the board would have to find that the existing CPC in holders will not meet the needs. And all of the evidence weighs heavily in favor of the current CPC in holders meeting the needs and doing all of the steps necessary. Now, there was some, I have to comment on something that Mr. Awad said. When YCS purchased the freest assets and purchased the medallions, there was a big issue with YCS having more than 49% of those medallions. There was, the additional medallions were never allocated. Those three medallions per company were never allocated. What happened was YCS basically said, we're not going to take 12 medallions so that way YCS would stay under the requisite medallion count. And that's the reason why YCS has approximately 48.96% of medallions. It says about as close to 49% as you can get, and that's what YCS has. And so, so there's not, there were no additional medallions. But why are we showing we're still meeting the needs of the, of the riding public? And there was talk about, testimony about how we have to balance the needs of the drivers as well as the riding public. That's in every business. You know, you, there's a supply and demand, and you have to make, for us to have drivers, the drivers have to be able to support themselves. They're, we have two customers. We have the customers that are the riding public, and we also have the customers that are our drivers. And the drivers have to be able to earn a living. Because if it's not profitable for them to work, they're not going to come to work. Or if they're coming to work, they're going to give horrible service and they're going to give, you know, a bad reputation to taxi cab drivers, which we've already tried to overcome. Every time we come in, someone new comes in. And why? Because we care about the riding public. We want to provide the best service we can. You heard about Mike and Valen when he testified, about all the steps that he does to make the drivers, you know, a better driver, not just on the customer service side, but also, hey, don't have any so many dead miles. So if you go downtown, don't drop, you know, don't go all the way back to MGM to pick up your next ride, you know, kind of grab something along the way. And that's just good business model because if the meter's not running, we're not making money and the taxi cab's not, you know, getting its fares either. And so I submit to you that based upon all the evidence that the applicant is, fails to meet the requirements of 8827 and specifically those two elements because all it takes is one element, and he fails to meet the burden on both of those elements. Thank you.
Just a correction for the record.
Oh, correction.
He mentioned that I had made a statement regarding the new 27 medallions. I didn't. That's not me, Mr. Carson.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carson. I apologize. I apologize.
You don't want to take responsibility for that. You don't want to know what he said about the 27 medallions.
No.
Carson, you're right.
Thank you for that. Sorry.
Thank you again. I might as well start where Mr. Gibson kind of left off. I guess he has kind of selective memory as to the evidence that I presented. Every month, gaming is breaking new records. Every month, McCarran Airport, Harry Reid is breaking new records. That's all part of the record. Last time I checked, direct testimony was evidence. So to say that there's nothing to show that there's an increase in demand is a little sketchy at best. But this protectionist attitude that they have is what caused a vacuum for Uber and Lyft to succeed. We're not going to let anybody in. We're going to fight you tooth and nail. Here we are, we're going to fight you, make you do this, expend attorney fees, everything like that, so we can drag you out to where you give up. And it worked. There hasn't been an application approved in 21 years. Why? Because of the last thing they made these people go through. Everybody still remembers it. Mr. Awad said, oh, I made a choice to be attorney and applicant. Hell, yeah. I couldn't afford me to be sitting here in front of you. I've spent 400, maybe 500 hours from February of 2019 to today on this application, preparing the exhibits, preparing the financials, answering discovery, doing subpoenas, everything. Sitting in the hearings, go to the hearing officer. If I was paying somebody, I'm out $200,000. They know that. They know that. They grind you. And I wouldn't be here if I wasn't confident in my abilities to get this application through. Again, I put my money where my mouth is. Every hour I take away, I'm a sole practitioner. Every hour I take away to do this job for this application is an hour that I'm missing with my clients. Not everybody has that luxury. I can pick and choose. That's what I chose. But to sit here and be scolded or reprimanded because I know what I'm doing, I'm trying to do my best, trying to do what's best for my family, that's what I've been dealing with for three years. And I've said it before, it's offensive. It is. If you had somebody said, why would you be sitting in the same room with somebody for three years calling you an idiot? You wouldn't. Every time, I just get a bite my tongue and go this. Every time, I just get a bite my tongue and go this. So I'm glad it's over, you know, I'm glad. You guys are going to come to your decision, and you're going to base it upon everything that you've heard. But let's talk about the position of superiority versus the little guy. I don't have a company. I've got a name, Independent Cab, I've got no employees. I don't have a car, I don't have a location. Yeah, because what can you guys say? No, Brett, you didn't meet your standards. Did I just buy 35 cars and now I got to go turn and flip them? Did I go sign a lease that I can't get out of for three years? They say I'm not a financial guy, I can't figure this out? That's financial. That's like, why would I go expend money when I don't have anything yet? They want to say that's no preparation. I didn't waste, I didn't go and look at this, I didn't go and do that. It would be stupid for me to, plain and simple. Everything. Most of it, everything is talking about pro forma. So, pro forma's numbers are off, he's stupid, he doesn't know what he's doing. I understand. Guess what? I did my best. But I can tell you this. Former Chief Ruben Aquino asked for my financial data on the company that I do own and operate, 34 limousine SUVs and sedans. You have that in front of you. 34 vehicles. Can I run 34 vehicles and make a profit? What do those records say? Of course I can. What are they going to tell you? I can't make it in this business. I've proven otherwise. I am picking up passengers, I am taking them to their destination. Right now, as we sit in this room, my company is doing that. And you know what? It has expenses, but it also has a profit. So whatever number I would have thrown down on this pro forma, it's not going to be good enough. Not for them. And even if it was a perfect pro forma, they would have intervened anyway, because there is no need for additional medallions. That's their position. There's no need. Now, if you believe Brian Bonifant, and if you believe Tig Siegerblum, who's probably one of the most smartest guys in the county, as it comes to the economic development of Clark County. And he's saying that there's a need now, and there's a need coming up in the future. If you believe those two witnesses, there is a need. If you believe that Allegiant Stadium is a disaster, and it's been up for a couple of years now, nothing has been done to fix that. They just ignore it like it's the plague. Yet, Allegiant Stadium has brought Las Vegas. I'm baffled. I think it's one of the greatest things that we've done for the city, and I've lived here my entire life. It's opened up doorways for every business in every category, every industry in Clark County. It's bringing international people, it's bringing in new tourists to this valley. And how should we meet them? We should meet them with open arms and give them a good memory. Las Vegas is good for that. Everybody comes here, likes that fun, remembers their Vegas trip. Don't tarnish it. I think Mr. Winter said that I would, will grow to appreciate the intervention. I don't think I ever will. I won't appreciate the interveners. I appreciate what they've gone through, and they have my respect. We talked. In evidence, ACAB started with 16 cars. And you know what? ACAB couldn't go to the strip, and they couldn't go to the airport. 21 years later, they're still operating. 16, last time I checked, is lower than 35. And limited geographically to the place Mr. Gibson called the best place, the airport, for all of his cab companies. ACAB couldn't even go there. Couldn't pick up, couldn't pick up on the strip. Was over here in Summerlin, at the JW Marriott, or the Sun Coast, or something like that. And you know what? He scrapped, and I guarantee he had some growing pains. But is he still here? Yeah. Is he still operating? Yeah. They said it would never happen. And you know why? It's because I was sitting in that room when they said that he could never make it. This is deja vu all over again for me. I'm hearing the exact same things that they said 20 years ago, and it doesn't make sense then, it makes sense now. Mr. Winter asked me about preparing the pro forma before talking to Mike Friedman. The application was filed before I spoke to Mr. Friedman. That is pretty much the reason I didn't talk to him about helping me with the pro forma. The application was already in. The, I think he admitted that it is possible to share lease. He doesn't agree with my method of calculation, so be it. I understand. I get his point. Move on. Mark Traptan for the Whittlesey and Henderson. You know, he read you the law. And says we need clear and convincing, present evidence, firm belief. You know, clear and convincing. My evidence must have firm belief that it's highly probable. That only applies to NAC 706453. That's the standard. Now, can I tell you on letter B that it's highly probable that I've never been convicted of a felony or a moral torture? I can say that at the highest probability. You have my background, you have my FBI search. We are not associated or controlled by a person with an unreasonable person. High probability that I've meant that. Not through me, but through your investigators. Ruben Aquino came out, his investigators came out, they interviewed me, they talked to me, talked to my wife, talked to my friends. Good moral character. All right, maybe not high probable, but it's still there. No evidence from them to suggest otherwise. So that leaves A and D. Financial ability to provide continuous service. Mr. Traptan stated that he hasn't seen my unredacted financials. But that doesn't stop him from telling you I'm not financially able. How does he come to that conclusion? A guess? Speculation? An assumption? He hasn't seen it. He should have no comment and move on. I think that's up to you guys. Do I have money in the bank? Can I provide reasonable services? High probability. I didn't produce any resumes into evidence. Yeah, true. I mean, I do have one resume, Mark Friedman. I told you that, you know? This thing, it was going along pretty well. He was going to be my GM, he was going to help me out, he was going to do this. Unexpected, his girlfriend, living girlfriend, partner dies. He destroyed him, and we were getting ready to go to a hearing in the summertime. He wasn't, he came to me, said, my mind's not there, just let me take some time to do this. Mark, I understand, you know? But at the same time, what am I supposed to do? I've already disclosed, according to you guys' orders, discovery cutoff, who's your witnesses, who's your exhibits, all that stuff. So I presented a direct testimony, again, evidence. And if I'm not sufficient to manage it, I have two people that will. And one of them I named, Tony Boer, my partner in LVL. You heard that directly from me. You've seen my financials from LVL, which include him as my partner, running a successful transportation company with 34 vehicles in it. 34 vehicles that cost more. Last time I checked, an Escalade costs more than a Camry. It's possible. Not only is it possible, it's being done. They talk about my income statement again. I'm losing $50,000 here, I'm losing $400,000 here. They don't talk about the cross-examination I did. And I said, hey, you know, is depreciation expense really an expense? No, it's a paper thing made up for your taxes. So I'm not writing a check for $290,000 every year to somebody called depreciation expense. That's just not what I'm doing. If I hire the mechanics, I've already included that in my maintenance costs. That's what George Balaban said. So I can take away that expense. If I run less times, run less shifts, the variable costs go down as well as the revenue. Understandable. But to sit here and throw rocks at a glass house, is that fair? I think I asked for this stuff. Help me out, let me see. And I said this in my deposition, you can ask Mr. Traptan to throw this. I don't want to go into a business to lose money. That's all there is to it. I work hard for my money. So hey, let me see your financials. No, it's not relevant. Sitting in my chair now, listening to this, everything that they said is relevant. So that Vegas bamboozled me. They didn't give me what they said. So... He said there was no testimony or evidence other than these photographs of taxi lines. Incorrect. Mr. Constantino, Bell's Road Supervisor, came in and said, yeah, I see taxi lines all the time. People are standing there. I also see taxi cabs sitting there with no people. And I said, oh, it's kind of like an ebb and flow. She said, exactly. There are times that demand exceeds the supply. And that, according to Mr. Constantino, is not good. He said, the better and the quicker we can move these passengers to their locations, the better. I admit, I haven't run a cab company. Never ran a cab company. Neither did anybody, until they became an owner.
Need to wrap up, Carson. You need to wrap up.
Thank you. And one of the most, I guess, strangest terms of events is that I objected to Mr. Awad presenting a closing argument or any kind of cross-examination. But I'm glad you guys did listen to my thing, because for the first time, first time in five days of hearings going through this, finally, somebody admitted to the board, to the administrator, that I am fit to run a taxi cab company. Intervener. He's sitting here telling you right now, I am fit to run this company. Going to piss off a lot of those guys over there. But he's here, and that's his testimony. As an intervener, who's opposing this application? He's at least throwing me a bone. Now, Mr. Awad said he supports diversity. Can you tell me how many women?
We're not in examination.
I know, I'm not rhetorical. Are there possible, are there any women, Latina, majority-owned companies in the taxi cab industry? None?
Well, that's not.
Just so you know, Mr. Baylen just raised his hand behind you.
There's no evidence about that one, where the.
Ms. Edner, my wife, gave her opening statements to you guys. And I kind of want to echo it, just to be done, is that she had a paragraph of her statement, it was called Her American Dream. And in that, it says, "We aspire to be the owners of a taxi cab company to, one, support the demand for taxis in Southern Nevada. Two, contribute positively with the industry by reaching a higher level of service and professionalism. Three, to provide work opportunities to many. Four, to provide a far better product than Uber, Lyft, and illegal operators. And five, to provide the opportunity of better lives for our families and the families of everyone involved." That, Mr. Awad, is why we want 35 medallions. So anybody, can anybody agree with that? Can anybody disagree with that? Thank you for your time. I really want to thank all of your guys' time. I know it takes time and stuff out of your regular schedule and stuff like that, but we think it's important, or I wouldn't be here. With that, we ask that you find that we are suitable and grant us the application for CPCN. Thank you.
So matter is deemed submitted, and I'll bring it back to the board and ask for impressions. Cheryl, may I ask questions of the interveners or the applicant?
We're not taking evidence.
No. Okay, so deliberation only?
Deliberation.
I'm not trying to cut you off, but that sounds like we're taking reopening evidence.
I got you.
Okay. And the record's closed.
Sometime I'll have three minutes to explain my.
Yeah. Mr. Thompson, would you like to go now? You want to go first?
Sure.
But we're not taking a vote yet.
No, I'll explain. First, I wanted to thank George Balaban, Ms. Gibbons, for their comments. I really value their knowledge of the taxi industry. Particularly George, or Mr. Balaban. He's been in various aspects of the taxi industry for over 50 years. And I value his opinion. And he says that independent cab is going to have a tough pathway in front of them, really tough. So, I really wouldn't want to be here too. But I've got to say, both Carson and Edner seem to be clever and intelligent people. So if I were a betting man, I would put my money on their surviving this and the company succeeding. Now, I really don't think they're going to turn a profit that first year, but then that's not surprising. And let me say that I'm one of the few people in this room who is not an attorney. And so, it's difficult for me, well, actually, it's baffling, to understand the niceties of the legalisms that we've been talking about here today. And that's what you get when you have a nuclear physicist on the board, you know? I really can't explain it more than that. I kind of, I tried to think, what am I doing here? Why am I here, and what is the purpose of my vote? And I was appointed by the governor, and I think I am here for the benefit of the populace of Nevada. And as I've sat through my six years on this board, I've become convinced that the taxi companies are crucial to the happiness of Nevada. All of you, it's very important that you survive and you're healthy. Now, I will say that, from a personal standpoint, I hope their company survives, because they're nice people. I don't want to see them go through a bankruptcy and their lives falling apart. But from a board member... But from a board member, I don't think I should care. Because I don't think the survival of their company is important to the happiness of the population of Nevada. And I, I, I've been looking at what effect will it have on the present companies? Because I don't want it to have a bad effect on you. I want you to continue as you are and get even better. Because I think it's, I won't go into what I think the future of the public transport is, but you are important to our future in Nevada. And I, I don't think it's important whether they succeed or not. And let me, let me give you just another 60 seconds of why I think that's true. There was a traumatic event in the history of the taxi industry three years ago. 2009, I believe it is, if people told me correctly. Frias, which was one of the major companies of taxis in Las Vegas, went out of business. They sold their assets. Oh my gosh. And in fact, yeah, it's kind of like the reverse of the independent cab not existing now and then existing in the future. I mean, if you think about the temporal reversal there, except it's fairly minor, 35 medallions versus however many Frias had, it's on the order of 100 or so. It didn't seem to affect you financially dramatically when they existed before they went out of business. You've dealt with them. Okay? And so, well, there was COVID too. COVID put a monkey wrench in everything. But the, the slideshow that Mr. Carson showed, the interminable slideshow, toward the end, made a great argument for how healthy the tourist industry is going to be in Las Vegas. Hence, the taxi industry is going to be healthy in Las Vegas. And in spite of what Mr. Awad has said, I think that's begun now. You can see things coming back together in Las Vegas. The airport, the casinos, et cetera. I think 2023 is going to be an even better year. So I don't think that there's going to be a, a massive upheaval, upheaval in the taxi industry. It's going to be better. And so for all of these reasons, I think that we should entertain the existence of independent cab. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Sure, Member Dick. I am concerned about a couple of things. Number one, I'm concerned about unfair barriers to entry. Both the reality of that and the perception of that. I think the perception might already exist, whether warranted or not. That's one of the things I'm concerned about. I, I will tell you, I was the administrator of this agency for over a year post-COVID. And unfortunately, Mr. Awad did not discuss the specific COVID recovery items that he mentioned that prevented him from supporting the application. But I will tell you, as the administrator of this agency, I gave at least a dozen interviews to the press to explain the, the, the industry not meeting the needs of the public. Now, things have changed and I haven't been the administrator for a minute. So I'm not exactly sure where we are on that. But I do agree with Mr. Thompson that tourism is up, record numbers, visitor ship is up. I do, I do find that there would be competition by granting this application. I do not find that that competition would be detrimental to the existing certificate holders. In fact, it might be completely irrelevant. The impact to, the public would also be not sufficiently adverse by granting the application. A number of people in this room during this hearing stated that the, that Las Vegas needs more cabs, but not more companies. So theoretically, the need is there and, and interveners have admitted that more cabs are necessary. The idea that they don't want any more companies, I understand, but that, again, that, that's a bit of a concern of mine. So what that leaves under the statute, in my mind, is whether Mr. Carson is fit, willing, and able. He's clearly willing. I would argue that he's fit for as long as he can capitalize a company, whether it's profitable or not. If it's losing money and he has the capital, capital to subsidize it for as long as it takes for it to become profitable, theoretically, he's fit. So the question, that leaves a question, is he able? And that's where I'm struggling. Is he able to run a cab company? I think it's questionable as if he understands the risks and is reasonably, reasonably prepared for those risks. He mentioned in his closing that he didn't want to risk his personal wealth. I'll just say, not his words. But I, I would argue that you absolutely are. So I think you should be perfectly aware that you absolutely are risking your personal wealth. He operates a transportation company currently. He has some experience in the industry as a lawyer. I think he's probably as capable as anyone other than someone who is currently a GM or a cab owner, a cab company owner. And if, as he mentioned, if he's not, who is? So my next concern goes to the impact on the industry of one of three things. One, that happened. These are the only three things that can happen. One is we deny his application and we all go home. Second thing is we grant his application and he runs a successful company. And there is an impact to the existing certificate holders because of that. Three is, we grant him his application and his company fails and he goes into bankruptcy and he goes out of business and there is an impact to the existing certificate holders and the industry and the perception of the industry. One of those three things is the only outcome. So I go to consideration of the impact on the public and the industry if his company fails, as the interveners have argued that he is likely to do. And that kind of, in my mind, becomes the primary consideration as to whether or not he has the right to granted a permit. And I would argue that Las Vegas probably doesn't need another French bakery. But if anybody in this room wanted to open one, they shouldn't necessarily be barred from doing so. Because this is a free market. And I might go try that French bakery. And I'm, and so do we, if Mr. Carson wants to do, and I'm being flippant and no offense to anybody, but if Mr. Carson wants to do what the interveners might characterize as build a money fire, if there is minimal impact to the industry and the marketplace from a regulatory standpoint, do we have the right to tell him he cannot do that? And I'm not sure that's true. So what are those impacts of those three outcomes? Well, there's, the, the negative impacts, which I asked a couple of the interveners specifically, what would be the negative impacts of his company failing? Amounted to, if he was granted a permit, he would compete with us for drivers. Well, that competition already exists amongst the existing certificate holders. So that's irrelevant to me. Because you are already poaching each other's drivers. Another 35 is, if that's going to literally impact your operations, we probably need to talk about solvency and then I can review, I can review some of the financials with the Taxi Cab Authority. But to me, that seems negligible. Next thing is, he might, if he's hurting for money, if he's not solvent, he might become a safety risk by taking shortcuts. Anybody might do that. Existing certificate holders could run at a loss and might take shortcuts. That's what the Taxi Cab Authority is for. That's what the Administrator Armstrongs people, people do. Having formally run that agency, I'm not worried of that happening or, or any company getting away with those kinds of things. Industry reputation might be tarnished. Well, the industry reputation might also be tarnished if we were perceived as oppaling unfair barriers to entry. I think that reputational risk is probably greater than a very small boutique company being granted a certificate and, and not making it. I agree with Member Thompson that whether Mr. Carson succeeds or fails, personally, is not the board's concern, but the impact to the existing certificate holders and the public is. So I'm, in the interest of the taxi industry, which used to be the standard for ground transportation, and now you could argue is a niche. It, it has a niche focus, the golden triangle. We like to say that because that's the area that we've, that, that the industry thrives. While Uber and Lyft and the TNCs, you know, have tens of thousands of more rides than we do. The way to address that is more cabs on the road. And I tend to lean towards granting the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm afraid I'm going to have to disagree with some of my fellow members. We have a standard, it's a five-point standard, as the applicant has told us. The applicant is responsible for meeting not some, but all of those five standards. And really, with a lot of hours spent before us, has not done much to do any of them. I think I know from these hearings that Las Vegas is booming again. And we've survived COVID. But we also know from our own experience and the own statistics that the administrator gives us, the taxi cab company is not booming at the same rate that the airport is, that construction is, that the gaming industry is. For the first time in essentially my experience as being a Las Vegas. So can we on our own find D or C? C is typically the one that most of these cases go by. Everyone that I've had, from the Public Service Commission, when my first case was Mr. Balaban's limo company, to the water cases I had at the Utilities Commission, to the charter bus cases I had at the agency that was the predecessor to the NTA, the Transportation Services Authority. It usually centers around C. Will the certificate not unreasonably and adversely affect the other carriers? And you rarely get good evidence on that. And when we came into this hearing, I read the packet and I said, well, okay. You know, you almost assume that the applicant knows what they're doing. Every case I've had, there's been somebody who has experience in that business before you. Maybe not at the general manager level, but there's always been somebody. So I come into the hearing and I said, oh, we have an economic witness. Great, finally going to hear that. It's not an easy question to answer. And Mr. Bonifat tells us he was specifically not told to address that question. And I'm like, what? I've got an experienced lawyer here who told his lawyer, excuse me, his economist, not to answer the key element of the case. Why not? You paid him anyway. So I don't know what Mr. Bonifat told us. So I was very frustrated at that point. But then, we went through the frustrating exercise of the interveners ripping apart an application and largely a pro forma. And I have to say, that is still excruciating after all these years. It's just rude, you feel sorry for the applicant, and you don't like it. It's just, it's not a great process. But what it does, a pro forma, yes, it is assumptions, it is projections, but it's essentially a business plan. And by testing that, you find out if the applicants generally know what they're talking about. Well, in my first transportation case, Mr. Balaban was before me. Both he, I, and Mr. Winter had a lot darker hair. And Mr. Balaban was up on the witness stand. And the other interveners, who were largely the taxi cab limo business at the time in Las Vegas, I think Mr. Balaban's company was the only one who didn't have a limo certificate at the time, were basically trying to rip apart his pro forma. What I remember from that is he could answer every question. Sometimes he corrected the lawyer and the lawyer would have to go over to their client whisper and then, okay. Like that, I mean, he, he was tripping up the people who were trying to trip him up. He knew what he was talking about. And great, and he was granted that certificate. And I flash forward to today, and this is the first time I get the feeling that the applicant really does not know how to operate a taxi cab company. Our own regulations say that somebody should have sufficient experience. What sufficient experience? I don't know that we have that, but it's got to be something. And practicing before this agency or the NTA is not experience. I represented developers for a lot of my life. I would not even try to build a shed in my backyard. I regulated utilities and you will not see me as a developer of any power plants. And just being a lawyer for an industry doesn't mean you know the industry. The applicant said in his closing arguments that, well, how do you get a general manager? Everybody back behind me is a general manager and they weren't a general manager before they got that. And I kind of looked, I went, how do those people have been in that industry longer than I've been in any business? They all grew up in it, their entire professional lives. That's how they became general manager. You don't have to be a general manager to be the general manager for a Ucap company. But you got to have somebody who kind of knows what's going on. Not somebody who's doing double duty with a busy law practice or any other practice. So I hate to say this and I don't mean to be insulting, I don't believe this applicant is fit. And we don't have any evidence really on pretty much B, C, D, or E. I guess I could get, I could get to C. Because we know that, I, I just, my hunch is another 35 medallions aren't going to really hurt the existing industry. So I could get to there, but I, I just can't get over the threshold issue. And when I walked in this hearing, I thought we wouldn't even be discussing that. Then I, something happened at hearing in August that really threw me. And I had a lot of discussions with our former Deputy Attorney General, Mr. Balla, about this. The applicant and the lawyer. Normally, you don't blame an applicant or a party for the mistakes of a lawyer. But when they're the same person, actions as a lawyer, are they, is this reflective of what the actions are going to be like as, as a certificate holder? The applicant testified under oath that the administrator of this agency directed him not to give revised versions of his application to the parties. We heard very quickly that that was an untrue statement. Later, the applicant apologized for a misunderstanding. And I left that hearing, trying to remember way back when I took the ethics portion of the bar. One, if it was a lie, it was a lie, and that's horrible. And right there should be just, the application should have been dismissed. But if it was a lie, it was a misunderstanding. I think it's pretty simple. I know it is under the legal ethics, but I think it is in the ethics of the rest of the board. When you're told to do something that is unethical by someone of authority, you don't do it. You're not supposed to do it. You ask for clarification, you go over their head, but you just don't do it. So I talked with Mr. Balla about this. We had a very long conversation, a couple of them. And he expressed to me that under the current model rules of ethics, the representation under oath that he was told specifically not to give that portion of the application to the other parties would be a, could be a violation of 3.3. I say could be. We didn't get into this enough to be conclusive and that's not our job, under the Candida Tribunal. Because clearly, it was a misrepresentation of what actually happened to us that day. Now, later, we say that it might have been a misunderstanding, but there is, under the model rules, 3.4, fairness to the other parties. That was obviously unfair to the other parties. An attorney that has practiced presumably all these years before this agency and similar agencies, that has been on the other end of it, should have known. A first-year law student should have known, you don't do that. It was unethical, even if you misunderstood the administrator. So I finally asked Mr. Balla, I said, well, So I finally asked Mr. Balla, I said, well, what does that do? How does that fit the standard? He goes, well, remember Soderbergh? Veracity goes to fitness. Even if you found this person was a fit operator, if you believe that there's a potential ethical violation, you can find them unfit for this alone. There was a pause, I was a little surprised by it, but I went, okay. And that was it. Now, Mr. Balla is no longer our legal counsel, I'm not re-asking the question again to our new legal counsel. But if I could find that this applicant knew how to operate or had any chance of success in a cab company, I still would find them unfit because of what went on in August. That, I can't get over it. So in short, I don't feel we can find, this applicant has met the standards outlined in the statute. We might get close on one or two, but we can't go to law five, and I can't get close to fitness. Mr. Chairman, if it is this board's desire to grant this application, I would probably make a motion for some amendments. But I don't know that I want to do that now. Quite frankly, it looks like the applicant's got one vote, and maybe a second vote, and then a no vote, but it takes three, so I think your discussion is pretty important right now, and maybe I don't need to bring amendments.
There's a few points that I will begin with, where I think some clarity on some positions that both parties have taken is important. The first is that Mr. Carson, on behalf of independent, has taken repeatedly the position that there's no Nevada law requiring the submission of a pro forma or a business plan to obtain ACPC. That is a patently false statement. NAC 706903 requires a CPCN applicant to submit that information to the authority as a required part of the application. And those business plans and pro formas in any other regulated industry in that are part of either suitability, fitness, whatever standard is applied by the commissioner of financial institutions, the Gaming Commission, the Public Utility Commission, it's not novel that you have to give a business plan, and that you have to give a pro forma. So I just will tell you, at the very beginning, I am troubled by that position, and it is not a position I will accept legally. Secondly, the interveners assert that the board only has the power, and this is my interpretation of what the interveners position. The board only has the power to grant a CPCN if the holders of the existing certificates will not meet the needs of the territory for which the certificate is sought, if the certificate is not granted. I think that seriously misconstrues the statute. And like Mr. Soderbergh, I had a lengthy conversation with our former DAG on this point. That statute states that if that situation exists inadequate service, and the board finds all of the other requirements of that provision of law, we must grant the certificate. We can't refuse to. It's a shell. And the Nevada Legislature says that's a duty to act. It doesn't say that if that fact, inadequate service, is not proven, that we may not. It doesn't take our discretion away. It's just a statute that says when we don't have discretion anymore. And the third, and here I'm probably going to differ seriously with my colleague, Mr. Decker. The argument that I got certificates from the Transportation Authority for a limo, bus, or anything else is an argument for administrative race judicata, which in the state of Nevada is a very well-defined concept. And Mr. Carson did not prove the elements of administrative race judicata. So the record, I will outline those. Under the Utah Construction case, there are some initial inquiries. Did the agency, and we're now talking about the TA, act in a judicial capacity? May have. Did the parties have an adequate opportunity to litigate that was timely and adequately noticed in that other proceeding? Did they have the right to be heard and offer evidence? Or was it a cursory or stipulated result? Was there a true evidentiary process in that other case? And was the decision made by an impartial party based on evidence introduced at the hearing? Not saying that the TA wouldn't have been impartial, but there's no evidence in front of us about what kind of a proceeding was having in front of the TA. And finally, did the agency have jurisdiction or power? Yes, the TA would have had that power. If we find those Utah Construction elements, then we go to the next step, which is, is there a final decision in the TA on the merits? No final decision on the merits was ever presented to us. The second is, was the issue decided in the prior case identical to the issue presented in the current dispute? I can say categorically, it was not, it was under a different statutory scheme. So whether evidence was presented or not, that element couldn't be proven. And third, did the party against whom the results of the final decision will be applied is a party in this proceeding and was a party in that proceeding? Or were closely affiliated? And therefore, we can fairly apply that. There's no evidence in front of us on that point. So as to the case law on administrative race judicata, and I'll cite Britain versus City of Las Vegas, 106 Nevada, 690, Roberts versus Las Vegas Water District, 849 Fed Sub 1393 applying Nevada law, Campbell versus State Exrel Department of Taxation, 108 Nevada, 215, Juries Nugget versus Keith, 111 Nevada, 49, and United States versus Utah Construction and Mining Company, 384 US, 384. It is my conclusion that whatever the TA did, the TA did, but the evidence wasn't presented to us, for us to give that part of the fitness evidence that Mr. Carson wanted us to consider legal recognition in this case. That said, I believe the record is abundantly clear on some of the factors that Mr. Carson had to prove by clear and convincing. There is no evidence of conviction in the confidential records or a crime of moral perpetuity. There is no evidence that Mr. Carson and Peppner are associated with organized crime or any other unsuitable person, and we all know what that statute's about. I'm sorry, that, NAC. There is no evidence that they are not of good moral character. So that is not the part of fitness unlike my colleague, Mr. Soder, or Member Soderbergh, that I am worried about. On the clear and convincing standard under NAC 706453, I can't, it's a bridge too far for me, Mr. Carson, that you've proved clear and convincing. Long before I did just regulatory work, I was a trial lawyer, I was putting people in prison, I was trying cases on behalf of the state where I had to apply clear and convincing evidence to get something done on behalf of the government. And I know clear and convincing evidence when I see it. And there is no, in my view, clear and convincing evidence of financial ability in this case to provide continuous service. And I will, without saying anything more, say I have read all of the confidential financial information. And I say that because I give a great deal of credence to the evidence that you're going to bleed when you open this business, and you're entitled to bleed. But how long can you bleed? And I kind of think I figured out how long you can bleed, and you're not going to be able to provide continued service. That's my humble opinion with the capitalization that is available. I also have to say on 706453-1D, I do not believe you've proven by clear and convincing evidence sufficient experience. You certainly haven't demonstrated employment by your own admission of a person with sufficient experience to properly manage a taxicab company. I appreciate you've been practicing law in front of these regulatory agencies. Being a lawyer don't make a manager. But I'm also going to say this, I reject out of hand the inference the industry wants me to take, which is, you got to be somebody who's run a cab company before to prove this out. There are people who get gaming licenses, there are people who get banking licenses, there are people who get to run water companies and sewer companies who've never been in that business. Now, they may, what they do bring to the table, which you have not brought to the table in my view, is a management team. Half a dozen MBAs who've run a bunch of different industries, know how to go out and raise capital, know how this industry works, that industry, and they'll sit down in a hearing, and they will tell you everything they've learned about the industry they now want a license for, and how they're going to pull it off. And they're going to give me the kinds of data you did not give us. It's not, it's not adequate evidence to say, I had a telephone call and I can buy these cars for that. There needed to be documentation. There needed to be documentation of how you were going to borrow the money to do this. There needs to be documentation of where you're going to actually operate this business. Not, I might do it this way, or I might do it that way. I'm actually going to agree with some of the intervenor testimony. I thought, when I walked in the hearing room the very first day, what he's going to present me is, having read the financial data, I'm going to take my limo company, and I'm going to use it as a springboard, and I'm going to collateralize it. And I've already got everybody on board for that, and this is how I'm going to do it. And there, here's the experience they have. I never heard that. What I heard is, I might do that, I might not do that. It's neither clear and convincing evidence, nor is it even a preponderance to say, I might do that. The argument you made that fell on deaf ears for me was, well, I'm not going to incur any of these expenses. I'm not going to even incur the expense of getting bids or estimates, documentation for the board to look at before I get the CPCN. That would be a wholly unique position in my experience as a regulatory lawyer. You do not go to the Gaming Commission and say, I'm going to build a casino. But when you give me the license, I'll go get the $500 million to do that. The $500 million, there better be that money in the bank. You want a banking charter in this state? You better have $40 million in the bank. You better already hired your bank manager. You better already have the bank location, because you have to have a business plan that says how you're going to serve the community where that business branch is. So, you know, it's not unique. You know, if I want to set up a water or a sewer company, I don't say, give me the certificate, and then I'll go get the water rights. And then I'll build the sewer plant. It's, you either have got the plans on the board, and you've got the money to do it, before I give you the certificate. And that's not a unique concept in Nevada law. And it shouldn't be unique in this context either. So I, I'm very troubled, I was very troubled, and still am, and do not believe that you over, you've proven by clear and convincing evidence, your financial ability, or that there's sufficient experience in this company to operate. Do I believe, in my heart, you could? Yeah, I believe the two of you have the ability to put together an application to do that. You just didn't do it. And I don't know why you didn't do it. Mr. Winter speculates that you want a CPCN but not to operate a company, there's no evidence of that. But certainly, I might draw that inference to on the evidence here, that you did the bare minimum to maybe try to get a CPCN that you would then market. I will say, if that were the business plan, that is detrimental to the state of Nevada and to the industry. This board should not be granting CPCNs for arbitrage. That would be a black eye for the state of Nevada. We should be only granting CPCNs to people who are going to go into business and pursue taking care of the travel. the standards of 8827, well, let me just comment on, because everybody's talked about NRS 706151. Wonderful statute. It's a legislative declaration of policy. It provides guide rails on how we should be doing something. And if we were to grant a certificate that would violate some of these things, like giving you some special benefit that no other company had, or by ignoring a regulation or a statute, then we'd fall prey to a 151 issue, but I don't, I don't personally see 151 as a major point here. On 8827, sub 2, A through E, I already said, B doesn't, it's just, 706151 is just guardrails, so I set aside B. The first is that you're fit, willing, and able to perform services. I believe you have personal fitness in states. I don't believe that you demonstrated, for the reasons I've already stated, on financial ability and management ability, that you are fit to operate without somebody else. Because being a lawyer in the industry, just as Member Soderbergh said, doesn't make you a manager of the industry. Practiced regulatory law for 40 years, both in and out of the government. I would never pretend that I could run a casino, a bank, a public utility. I know how to represent them in hearing, but I wouldn't pretend I know how to run those companies. Nor would I be so bold as to say that, actually, to a regulator. But the term fitness, willingness, and ability are, and I use this term in the legal sense, those of us who went to law school a long time ago, are pregnant with meaning. Fitness doesn't just mean that you're honest. Fitness means you're able to do this from a Fitness means you're able to do this from a standpoint of commercial competence, not just probity, but acumen. Willingness doesn't mean, sure, "I really want to do this; I have a passion for it." Willing means, "I've got the capital; I've got the commitments; I've got the documentation to prove I have the ability, day one, to turn the switch, if I am given a CPCN." And ability is, as I've said a couple times, more than just, "I've represented the industry." It's the ability to actually manage and operate the thing you want to operate. And I am not convinced, even proven by a preponderance, that you're fit, willing, and able, except for I believe you've proven by far more than a preponderance, both of your personal characters. I have no concerns whatsoever there. Now I get to the industry's position on 2C, D, and E. C is granting, the certificate will not unreasonably and adversely affect other carriers. I concur with Member Becker. I can't say that you haven't established by a preponderance that there's not going to be an unreasonable or adverse effect for 35 medallions. The fact that there's going to be more competition is not a bad thing, and the legislature amended the statute to tell us that we should be not using competition as a pure basis for not granting a certificate. So, there's going to be competition for drivers. There's competition for drivers today. There will be, if and when you bring back a proper application fully formed to get a certificate, that, to me, is not an issue. D, the holders of the existing certificates will not meet the needs of the territory. Already stated, I dismiss that one. That is only if, I am only required to give the certificate if I make that finding. I don't find that they're not meeting the needs, nor am I finding that they're meeting the needs. And here, I'm just going to say, we're in a period of intermodal transportation disruption, and it's not over. It's going to continue, and to a certain extent, God, I hope, we get back to 27 million rides, but I'm not sure we ever will, because there's a disruption, and that's the TNCs. And they're not going to go away. They've shown that they're not going to go away. They'll subsidize themselves for whatever purposes if it's just delivering food. But that disruption, frankly, nobody presented in the evidence in this hearing room as to whether more medallions or fewer medallions is going to fix that problem, because the only way for the taxi cab, or the taxi cab industry, to fix that problem is to meet the TNCs at their own game. And the industry hasn't yet developed the technology or implemented the technology, and that's not accusatory, it's just not there yet. Hopefully, the board can help in the future to get to that. So, I get to, finally, will the proposed service benefit the public and the taxi cab business and the territory served? I believe you've proved that particular element. 39 more medallions, or 35 more medallions, I frankly don't think is going to change the need. And while you, while I wouldn't want you to go bankrupt, if you were to go bankrupt, I also don't think that 35 medallions falling out of the system is going to do harm to the rest of the industry. When Freus did, you know, its blow up, did we move on? No, we moved on. If your company were to blow up, I don't think that would be. To a certain extent, I agree with Member Decker. You have the right, at a certain level, to go into the business if you prove the elements you have to prove it, all of those elements, which you have not. You have the right to take your shot and see if you can't build the next 250, 350, you know, medallion company. That's your, that is a right that the statute gives you to do. You have to prove the elements to get there, and I don't believe you've done that. So, for those reasons, I cannot support this application in the form it's intended. I do want to say this: I have been, the one thing that I have wrung my hands about is, we have the power to impose a bucket load of conditions on a certificate, to let, to put guardrails on giving somebody that certificate. And I want you to know that I have literally spent probably three or four hours, maybe that's not enough time for the Chairman of the Board, trying to figure out, could I craft those kinds of conditions in a way that makes sure that by the time you got your CPCN activated, you were in proper financial and managerial state to run the company? And I concluded that, because I am so brilliant, I could come up with those conditions, but they would put a huge, a huge burden on the administrator and the agency, which actually the statutory scheme has said is our burden. And that burden is to make the tough call as to whether to grant the CPCN. And so, at the end of the day, I walked away from that consideration, because I'd love to grant the CPCN to somebody who's made out all of the elements, because I agree with Member Becker. We have to be not, we can't be a barrier to entry that only, take no offense, people, that only the good old boys that are already there get to keep, and the good old gals. That's not what the statutory scheme's about, but trying to craft conditions, I can't, it's a bridge too far for me. So, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, I also reviewed 706 for conditional provisions, which many other chapters of law and other regulatory schemes have, and there aren't any specific provisions. I will say, there were a number of times during the testimony of the intervenors, specifically industry experts, in which I found myself personally worried for Mr. Carson and his personal well, and I found myself trying to figure out how he was not as worried as I was. And what occurred to me is, and one of the questions that I mentioned that I might want to ask, after closings, which we didn't have the opportunity to do, was going to be, and I'll ask it of you because we're deliberating, is there any value to a CPCN for someone who wants to possess it but not operate a cab company, as Mr. Winner mentioned? Because the minute he said that, I turned to my notes, in which I had written that down as a question that I, as a former administrator and as a board member, don't know if there's any value, and so I was curious as to...
I think as I, so I think you're propounding that question.
I am, yes.
I think I've answered that in part, but maybe you didn't get that I was, that was the question I was answering.
Well, I did.
I don't believe, I don't believe that we should grant CPCNs for speculative purposes.
I absolutely agree with you, and it occurred to me that maybe there was less concern for the financials and the testimony of the interveners that the pro forma was inadequate, because possibly there was an intent to possess the CPCN for its own value, other than using it to run a cab company. That occurred to me. I don't know the answer to that question, if there is any value, and I didn't get a chance to answer it to the intervenors, but it did occur to me a number of times, to the point where I wrote it down, and when Mr. Winner said, what he said, I found in my notes where that was on my list of concerns, because there was enough testimony from the intervenors to worry about the numbers, to worry me on behalf of the applicant.
The other, not only the speculation issue, the other issue that I have is, as I read the statutory scheme, I don't see that the legislature's telling us to go grant CPCNs that have no value to the traveling public. I mean, that, a CPCN granted under some set of conditions that it can't be used until you do X, Y, and Z, doesn't add one cab to serve the traveling public. And I, so I think, rightfully, because the administrator and I seem to be the ones that get called before the legislative committees, I wouldn't necessarily want to have to explain to a legislator, "Oh, yeah, we came up with this new category of CPCN, but you don't have to actually operate a company."
Well, and I think most regulatory chapters include the authority to grant conditional or provisional certificates, and there's probably a reason that 706 doesn't.
Other thoughts? If there's not any other thoughts or discussion, then I believe we're in a position for a Might be an interesting outcome, but, no. I would entertain a motion if somebody would like to make it.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you before we do a motion. I think we have two members that don't want to grant this item, and two that do. So, should I, should the proper form of the motion be a motion to grant the certificate, knowing that I'm making the motion and voting no, or should I make a motion to deny the certificate? I haven't done this in a long time. I don't know if we've put it in the negative. I know my vote is in the negative, but I don't want to do this wrong, or maybe the vice chairman should make a motion to approve, since he's told us he would like to do that, and then we can go from there.
Or you can make a motion in whatever form you want to, and if it doesn't carry, then another motion would be required.
Well, okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, there's four of us.
Yes.
We could be 2-2.
We could, could be.
So, I guess if I make a motion to grant the application, and we've got the DAG up there, you're on the screen now, we can see you.
Yeah, I've been here the whole time listening. I just figured now I might actually have something to say.
Yeah, okay, so here's the question to you.
Yeah, I've been listening. What I would do is...
To grant the application, and that motion fails, are we done?
That's what I would do. Instead of making the motion in the negative and then remaking a motion in the affirmative, make the motion in the affirmative of granting, and then if it fails, it fails, and there you go.
The motion fails with a tie vote.
Shall I make the motion, then?
You may.
Yeah, a tie vote is not an approval. It has to have three votes, a majority.
Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the acceptance of independent cab as a cab company.
Second.
Second? And therefore grant the application?
And grant the application, yes.
Will you take that?
I second the...
Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, my comments stand. It's not a personal reflection. I think we've heard from a number of people that the applicants are nice people, and that's just fortunately not something that we're to consider. And so, I hate talking negative about people, and it was very uncomfortable for me, but at the end of the day, the statute doesn't have a nice-person standard. And so, I think they leave here everybody saying that they're nice people, and we hope everything goes well for them, but I will be voting no.
Question to the deputy AG before we take a vote. So, a 2-2 vote, what is the effect on the application?
A 2-2 vote is not granting the application and has to be a majority.
Right, so it's neither granted nor denied.
I'm not sure if there's another avenue besides granting or denying. It's either granted or denied, and if it's not granted by a majority vote, seems to me that's a denial.
I would add, for comments on the motion, that my inclination, I'm very worried about the ability of the applicants to maintain continued service. I think that was made clear by the industry experts. However, I tend to lean in favor of a marketplace in which people can figure that out for themselves. My concern is, is there a significant impact to the industry or the public? I think probably there isn't, and I also probably think that Mr. Carson is saying his lucky stars in the future that he was going to this application, but my, I would vote to approve it.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
If they are denied, can they resubmit with an easy application?
With a what?
They would have to submit a new application within 180 days after, if this is denied, they would have to wait six months before a new application could be presented to the authority.
They're timed out for 180 days, but then they can file a new application.
All right.
Any further discussion on the motion? Motion has been made to grant the application. It's been seconded. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? I want to, before we go off the record, at least from my perspective, thank all of council for their preparation, their energy, the very long and tortured path that you all went through, which I've always publicly stated, I hope we do not repeat in the future. And, you know, the administrator and I will try to make that so that that's not a situation on a new application, but I appreciate the professionalism and everybody's preparation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, no, we will not stand adjourned. Final item before we adjourn is public comment. This time is set aside on our agenda for members of the public who wish to address the board of matters within jurisdiction, so action may be taken on those matters. And we need to ask any member of the public who wishes to address us to try to leave their time for three minutes. Is there any member of the public who would wish to make comments? In order of business, we usually have our monthly meeting commencing at 9:30, but it is at 9:00 tomorrow because we are evicted from the room, so soon...
I'm sorry, gentlemen, can you repeat that? I'm hearing a lot of fussing with papers and clips. What was the schedule for tomorrow, 9 o'clock again?
Tomorrow is our regularly scheduled monthly meeting, which is usually scheduled at 9:30, but it is at 9:00 because we have a room facility problem tomorrow.
It's the same link?
The same link, yes.
All right, then I will see you guys tomorrow morning at 9:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.